Nice to be here. Hello?
Hello. Yeah, yes, I am here. Um, okay. Oh, because we couldn't. Okay, um, yeah, this is where the and where I'm the applicant of the um, I'm the Asian designer here. So like for this project, which is simply just adding rear addition and to extend the building depth. And if you look at the entire street, the building depth actually longer than the expected seventeen. So they're all more than seventeen meters. Uh, the reason that we want to extend the size because the family members uh, starting growing. And then the number of people are are living in more like more than five or six here, including their grandparents. So that's why they want to increase the 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 living space.
No questions?
Okay. Madam Chairman, unless my colleagues have any concerns, I support this application. I think as you've said, it's very straightforward. The variances are reasonable. The proposal is a reasonable addition to the neighborhood. I therefore move approval of the application without any conditions.
Hello, yes. Yes, my name is Jason Halter.
No.
No questions?
No.
Yes, I am. Uh, thank you, no, Madam Chair and committee members. I'm all clear here.
I think what's being asked for is reasonable, not out of line. There is some similar build and roof scape down at the crossroads. And I think the increase being asked for in FSI is reasonable. So I would support approval of the application with transportation conditions, planning conditions, and forestry condition number one. If there's no other comments from my colleagues, yes, there would be a motion.
I'm happy to second the motion.
Yes, so I'll use.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, can you hear me now? Okay, um, my name is Tyler Peck from W and D Associates. We're the planners and applicant for this application.
Madam Chairman, I, Madam Chairman, I don't need a presentation. Mr. Peck's planning rationale and history was very helpful to establish how we got to where we are. The only overriding question is how did all this work happen without it being caught? But that's not a question for Mr. Peck. I don't think we need a presentation. He's covered it very well, I think, in his planning rationale.
Agreed, I don't need a presentation either, Madam Chair. Only question, the only question I have is whether or not the applicant is has any issues with the recommendations set up in the planning report. I believe not, but are you okay with those conditions?
Thank you for the question, and I was I was gonna add before you go into committee that we've worked with building, planning, and housing staff for many months, and we are in support of the recommendations in City Planning Staff Report. And I would also just note for the committee's information that the council's office has also filed an app, a letter with the committee. It was unfortunately filed late because we were working out the details of tenant assistant relocation plan with housing staff. But there's a letter on file with the committee supporting the legalization of the units from the council's office as well.
That's great.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to, sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Lisa.
No, you go, Carl, it's okay.
I I was, I would like to move approval of the application unless Lisa has any questions. I think that with the real, the very detailed planning conditions, this is an improvement to the community. The legalization is warranted and reasonable, and I have, I support the application and I'm happy to recommend approval subject to the very detailed planning conditions.
I I will second that. I fully support the application myself, and it's, it makes sense to legalize something that's been in existing use without any issues and bring it up to code, both fire and building. So it's all good in terms of that, and I'm in support of the application, so a second.
I am here. Okay, my name is Jacob Kachuba. I'm the agent of the owners for 200 Quebec Avenue. This application is seeking four minor variants, and as noted in my report, there were two objectives for the owners. The first was to enclose and enlarge the front porch on Quebec Avenue and to include an additional secondary suite. Tignan was not informed of the planning report until it was uploaded to the portal on February 10th. Since then, I have spoken numerous times with the planning department. I have reviewed the planning department report and the neighbors' letters with the owners. As a result of this discussion, the owners have listened to the community and the planning report and would like to make minor amendments to the variances being sought today. If you can, can you turn to page seven of thirteen of my report? Uh, there is a picture there. There was a picture there I'd like to use as a talking point. I tried to submit supplementary documents for this discussion, but words was denied due to the five-day rule before the hearing date. Um, so if you could zoom in on the first picture there. So the main subject of the variances being sought today are in relation to this front porch. It's located on the Quebec Avenue side of the property. I also want to note that this property is located within two blocks of the High Park subway station, and any potential renters for the secondary suite would have very close access to the TTC and Rapid Transit. The previous intention was to slightly enlarge and enclose the front porch, and this was to make usable space for the family. The intention was to have this as an unconditioned space and act as a mudroom for the children's toys, boots, and have a closet for clothes and or jackets and whatnot. I should note that the owners have two children under the age of five. So any enclosure of this front porch would have increased the FSI and the percentage ratio between the primary and secondary suites. The intention now is not to enlarge the front porch, but only to enclose the area occupied between the two main masonry columns that you see there and the house itself. Therefore, I'm going to summarize the amendments we'd like to make for this application. The first variance is in relation to the percentage between the primary and secondary suites. By reducing the size of the front porch, we're not going to go for a fifty-fifty split. However, we want to increase the secondary suite percentage to fifty-two point five percent. Um, as I noted in my report, previous committees have approved upward of sixty percent for secondary suites within the neighborhood. Variance two is in regards to the front yard landscape, and this was the rejection by the planning committee report. I have spoken with planning, and they would agree to this proposal so long as we keep the existing soft landscape as it is. Uh, I do have emails going between myself, the planning department, and ICC Jacob Cockrell. I'm not sure if he's there today, but he said because we could not submit additional documents within the five days to the hearing date, we were unable to get a approval letter from the planning department. So in regards to variance two, the existing soft landscape area is eighteen point two one meter squared or fifty-nine percent of the area of the front yard. This is still less than the seventy-five percent of the zoning bylaws, and therefore what we are now asking for is for an approval of the existing, which is fifty-nine percent soft landscaping. Now, uh, previous committees have approved as low as twenty-nine point three soft landscaping within the neighborhood, and this was granted to four oh three Quebec Avenue, which is just not too far from this property. Looking at variant three, this is in relation to the increase in FSI. In two thousand and fourteen, this property was approved for a four-unit building and was allowed one point oh nine times the lot area. We currently, as a result of reducing the front porch, we would like to amend the variance to have one point one three five in relation to the lot area or two hundred and fifty-seven point three square meters. The last thing, or variance four, is in relation to the front yard setback. By now not enlarging the front porch, but only maintaining what is currently there, the distance between the property line and the front masonry column is two point seven eight meters. Therefore, we would be asking for a front yard variance of two point seven eight meters. The owner has discussed this application with neighbors, and I do know that they had a verbal approval from the adjacent neighbor, one ninety-eight Quebec. He has spoken with other neighbors as well on Pinecrest and has had verbal discussions with with the neighbor. So on that, I conclude my presentation and look forward to commenting on any questions anyone may have. Correct. Correct. That's correct. That's great, that's correct.
Chairman, could I could ask another question before we do that? The the purpose of the application indicates that to to alter the existing two-story, three-story, two-unit, three-story semi-detached dwelling into a three-unit semi-detached dwelling. In the planning rationale, the suggestion is that what we're doing is legalizing a secondary suite in the basement. Is is the basement secondary suite already existing? In which case, are we are we legalizing something that already exists rather than deciding whether we should approve one?
That's correct.
Okay, my only question would be, does the purpose of the application need to change? Before we deal with the other, I appreciate the other issues because I have some concern with the revised variances, but is the purpose of the application still correct?
The purpose of the application is still correct, yes. But I I was only making reference to the two notes there in regards to the variances being sought. Yes, but it hasn't been occupied by anyone. It's still being used by the owner, so this was to legalize that secondary, second secondary suite.
It, yeah, it it's perhaps a moot point if it's not occupied, but I I think we've got other issues to deal with. I just wanted to get that clarified. I have concerns with the two changes in variances which provide for larger variances than what were, what was circulated to the public because I don't know if it's appropriate for us to be evaluating and ultimately deciding on those without the public weighing in. There, one could argue that when the variance is increasing, somebody that didn't object might object to the increase.
Like I said, the 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 premise here was to listen to the community and only go as far as what the existing porch is.
No, I I totally, I I understand what you're trying to do, and I don't disagree with that. I'm just, I'm I'm trying to address the concern that the chairman raised, and I think she's quite right to raise it, that the variances that you would like us to consider today in two cases, I think it's number one and number four, they're larger variances than were circulated to the community. And notwithstanding whether they're an improvement or not, are we obligated to make sure that the community weighs in on the larger variances?
If I just might clarify, I think in terms of variance for the front yard setback, it's improving. So even though it's larger, it's still improving, so I think that's okay. It's, I think the question is, is the the secondary suite one in terms of increasing the percentage of interior floor area? Am I right on that? That's the only one that probably is of a concern?
Yeah, that's the only one that's increasing is number one, from fifty to fifty-two point five. The others are improving the situation from what was applied for. And I also had a question with respect to the purpose, sorry. The rear pergola with roof structure above the rear attached garage are, does that activate any of the variances? I wasn't sure. From straight read, I don't see that there's any reference to those.
No, there were no issues regarding that pergola structure.
Okay, thank you. I'm okay to hear it as amended.
I am as well. I I just, I there's a, I have a reservation. I'm wondering, does the deputy secretary treasurer have a point of view that she wishes to share with us about variance number one as revised?
So you'd suggest that you, that it would require a new notice? Okay. Oh, that made a lot, may allow for clarification of the plans and the purpose, if that was to be true. And then there'd be no doubt that everybody was clear on what it was about.
It it sounds like it needs to be a deferral if if it's a worsening situation for variance number one, and we need to recirculate. That's what I understood. Is that, is that the case? I think that's the case, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
That is fair. I'm in agreements with deferral then, unfortunately.
Hello? It's Federico Sanchez here. Right, I mean, I I had a couple of of concerns as well. Cause I'm, to my knowledge, there were four units in that building, and their neighbor had five units in their building. So I don't believe that these builders. Okay, now, now they did. Uh, yes, I support a deferral, but I have, just one more question if I might. In terms of enforcement, if they have three units, then they're only allowed two. Is that something I would take to enforcement then at this point? Well, that's what they're saying, but in the past, they've done things and haven't been entirely honest about it nor of their neighbors. So the, who who would that be? Because it's not the building inspector. Okay, great, thank you very much. And in terms of the garage that they have that they want to put the pergola on, they built it far in excess of the building permit, if you ask me. And is that what I call to about enforcement about that as well, or is that more the building inspector? Great, thank you very much. I know she's online, I know she is here. I don't know if she can get to her. I know she's online. I know she is here. I don't know if she can get to her. It took me a while to be able to be heard.
Hear me? Hello? I'm okay with the deferral because right now I'm totally confused. But I do have a big problem as well with the proposed rooftop. The what is it? The rooftop thing over the garage, the the rear pergola? It's because my bedroom and my living room, because of the way the streets are faces right onto it. And already with all the changes that they have made, it's been, it's horrible. I lose my privacy because they cut down all the trees into construction site out there, and I don't know what to do about that. Okay, so where can I take this to to the city? Okay. Okay.
Hi there, I'm here. But I'm also corresponding with Diane and she's been, she's caller 16 and she said she can't get in. She said her sound cut out. She did call in, so she is waiting. Yeah. Okay, I don't believe he will. And he lumbered directly across the street and he's I've tried to speak to him about other issues and he's not open to it. The change, the discussion today doesn't change anything for me. My issues are around the 0% soft landscaping in the back, not the front. He's taken out trees and there's nothing about and the pergola. So it won't change anything for me. So I've been on here since 9:30 this morning. I'd love to be able to speak to it. Okay. Okay, so one question. Who will that be something we discuss next time that he's running a commercial business and that the driveway is constantly filled with ants? Or is that something I could take somewhere else? Okay. Okay. Okay, and Diane has texted and she really does want to have a chance to say something. She has a question she needs clarification on. So she's caller 16 and she's asking if you can unmute her.
Madam Chairman, while Jacob's doing that, might ask a question. Not not just just a general view, Madam Chairman. What the deferral, the deferral that's being considered is based on the applicant's proposal to change variance number one by 2%. And I agree with the if we were going to hear that, I think it needs to be recirculated. However, listening to the opposition, it doesn't sound as though a deferral is going to accomplish very much. It none of the people have spoken have indicated that when this comes back that their views will have changed, that their objections are to other aspects of the application. It seems to me that we have two alternatives. One is to defer it for the the new variance that was proposed today. But it sounds as though it's going to be a rehash of exactly what we have before us today, in which case I'm not sure a deferral is of much use. The other alternative is to hear the application as it stands before us with the changes to variance two, three, and four, because I think they don't require notification, and hear the application today. And I'm personally, based on what I'm hearing from the appellant, I'm leaning towards hearing the application today.
Um, if just another comment is, I think that the the purpose of the application as stated in the notice has has raised a number of issues with respect to what people feel is before the committee today with respect to concerns with respect to pergolas and garages and rear landscaping that isn't part of the application now, whether it's amended or not amended. I think there's a little bit of confusion about what's actually and not, you know, by anybody's fault particularly, but as to what we're actually dealing with. The issues with respect to the garage, I understand just from looking at the plans that were submitted, there's a note on them that talks about that it's part of existing building, you know, a building permit that's already been issued. The pergola, you know, according to what I can discern from from the variances being requested, nothing before us relates to that. So I think that there's a lot, you know, I think that everybody obviously has some issues, some of which are things that may relate to the matters that ultimately are really part of this application versus what's in the description or what has has or is occurring on the property in the past and up to this date. So that's, you know, being able to focus is is going to be a challenge that way. That's my giving people time to understand all those different issues as we're coming to understand them ourselves this morning.
Yes, I'm I'm here. Can you hear me? Great, thank you. I I have a question, sorry, can I? They talked about, yeah, just to clarify, because they talked about legalizing the existing basement and it's already legalizing the existing. In in my proposal, there's actually a refusal of a previous permit that was there previously to legalize the existing basement suite. And that was previously refused. The refusal notice was in 2019. So I I'm not sure on that clarification. And on the second part with regards to the actual building permit for the garage, it was submitted, as you can see, as a single-family dwelling semi-detached, which we know it's not. And it also, because it's a grandfathered structure, it increased the height of an attached garage, which I'm wondering why it's not in a variance of FSI. And there's also been a roof structure put on top of that that is also extends out into the back about a foot and a half into the rear yard setback, which is already at 1.15 meters, six meters well beyond what is approved and also is not listed in the variance. So there's an increased scope of a slippery slope of a bunch of about two or three permits all being rolled into this plan and everyone's trying to understand it. And it seems that there's some variances and legalization that he just mentioned was existing already, but in a previous permit refused. That doesn't seem to be clear. And I would also mention the zoning person on the certificate has refused to answer any questions that I've actually reached out to him twice. So how can we possibly make a and one last thing? Also, within that previous committee adjustment, it says the setback was approved for seven meters. And on the plan, it shows that the setback for the rear is actually 1.15. So there's a complete discrepancy even between the previous committee of adjustment and the current plans. And there was no previous adjustment to allow for zero soft landscape, soft landscaping in the back where five large trees were removed. There was no variance to approve that and it's been done. So yes, the committee, the community is a little bit upset by this because things are being done without permission. And it's been slipped through.
Maybe it has to go through zoning review again. I mean, maybe.
What what I was referring to, Madam Chairman, was the objections were, we're not going to go away with a deferral. And unless there were going to be changes made, most of the objections that I'm reading about would still stand. However, as Ms. Hayes has indicated and various of the objectives have indicated, there are, the applicant, the application seems deficient in many areas. There seem to be discrepancies and information that isn't clear. As Ms. Hayes has indicated, people aren't really completely clear what it is that's being proposed. Actually, neither are we. I I don't see a deferral of this application by changing four variances is going to achieve much. If there's a clarification of what it is that's being proposed, and if there is accurate information provided, then then I think a deferral meets is 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 warranted. But I don't know how we view as a good idea. I think maybe maybe that is the right way to go.
Yeah, it begs to question what the issue is with the rear yard setback in terms of it. It says it's listing on the documents at 1.15 or something like that. The approval was for seven meters, which is part of the garage is seven meters. The other part is 1.15. So I
And how many how many units are there? We've heard two, three, and four. Well, Madam Chairman, since I was the one that questioned the deferral, I I I would agree that a deferral can't hurt. I just don't want to waste the committee's time or the public's time. I would I would move a deferral to allow the applicant to clarify the purpose of the application and the details of the application and to consult with the objectors in the neighborhood on the aspects of his proposal that have raised concerns. That's quite a large amount of work, but unless that's done ahead of time, we're just going to waste our time at another hearing. Can I can we require that or?
I think if we say to clarify the application and the variances required through a new zoning review as a condition to the deferral.
That's fine.
Do you agree to that, Carl?
I do. Yes.
A second. Two, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.